City Council Public Hearing will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Repozo?
Yep.
And President LaLeverdi-Labeau?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I have a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open?
Second.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counsel Repozo, seconded by Counsel Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item one is auto repair shop. Naomi Sores, 1030 Dwelly Street, DBA RS Performance and Repair for a license to operate an auto repair shop at 1030 Dwelly Street on Lot G-15-44 on the Assessor's Plan. Are there any proponents that are wishing to speak? Any proponents? Did you want to speak? If you would just give your name and address for the record.
Naomi Sores, 1030 Dwelly Street. I just wanted to introduce myself to the whole board. My name's Naomi. I'm trying to open up a small little repair shop, and I honestly hope you all vote in favor of me to open this with the license. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add that years ago, that was a repair shop.
It was.
Before. It's not different. Thank you, Mr. Sores.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents?
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Vice President Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. The second item was for a pole location and a motion to open.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counsel Repozo, seconded by Counsel Vice President Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item two is Mass Electric Company for a new pole location as follows. On Essex Street, the petitioner is proposing the installation of a new 35-foot pole and anchor with guying approximately 105 feet west of existing pole number nine. The extension of a secondary conductor will allow for two new houses to be serviced. Are there any proponents that would like to speak? If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Frazier, National Grid, 245 South Main Street, Hopefield. Proposing to install a new pole 10 on Essex Street approximately 105 feet west of existing pole nine for services to new houses.
Anything further?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that would like to speak?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Justino. This is my husband, Jason Justino. We live at 10 Tiffany Drive, and we're here in regards to ongoing flooding issues.
I think they're here for citizen input.
Are you here for citizen input or for the -- we're in the public hearing?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Any other proponents for the pole location? Any opponents?
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Carrera. All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned made by Counsel Vice President Deion, seconded by Counsel Carrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Meeting adjourned. Fall River City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Carrera?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
President LaLeverdi-Labeau?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one is citizens input. First person signed up to speak is Jim Pimentel, June 10, Somerset. The subject is fair share amendment.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Motion to waive the rules made by Counsel Carrera, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Pimentel?
Will you come down? Put the speaker in there.
Put the microphone.
She signed up separate, so do you each want three minutes?
Good to see you all. Thank you, Madam President.
I'm sorry, yes?
It's been quite a while since I've seen many of you.
Hold on one minute, Mr. Pimentel. Yes?
Could we have them come down? There are two people we can --
You want them to come to the table?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Looks like he's got a package there anyway.
What's that?
To deliver. Go ahead, jump over.
No, come this way.
You could just unhook it.
I know Rebecca could jump. Jim, I'm not sure.
So they have both signed up to speak. The second speaker is Rebecca Cusick, 1528 Highland Avenue. The subject is fair share.
It's been a while since I've been here, so I'm not quite used to the procedures. Thank you. So, good evening. We'd like to speak to you about the fair share amendment and the resolution in support of it that you'll be voting on tonight. By the way, I think if Fall River approves it, it'll be either the eighth or tenth city council in the state in the last month or so to approve a resolution in support of it. New Bedford just did a couple of weeks ago. The fair share amendment is an amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution that will appear in the form of a ballot question on November 8th. It would change our state income tax from a flat 5% tax on all personal income to one in which everyone would still pay 5% on the first million and then pay an additional 4% on any personal income earned over $1 million. So in other words, you make a million and $100, you pay 5% on the first million, you pay 9% on the 100 bucks over in any other income. I want to underscore what I just said. The additional 4% multiply only to personal income earned, not assets, not business income, nothing else. The additional revenue raised, which is estimated to be approximately $1.5 billion annually, could only be spent by the legislature on infrastructure, public transportation, and public education, both K-12 and higher ed. Consider what the extra annual income would mean for Fall River's aging infrastructure and its public education system. I don't have the stats specifically for Fall River, but according to the American Society for Civil Engineers, 470 bridges and one out of every four roads are in poor condition in the state. Repairing the bridges alone will cost $15 billion, and the impact from driving on these substandard roads costs the average driver an extra $620 per year. The additional funding could also help provide expanded bus service for Serta while we're waiting for South Coast Rail and would help ensure the rail network has the resources it needs to maintain efficient on-time service once up and running. Besides the needed investments to our state's economy that the change would provide, it also makes the state income tax a little bit fairer. For years, the highest-income households in Massachusetts have paid a smaller share in state and local taxes than any other income group. They've also repeatedly benefited from federal tax cuts. A handful of billionaires in Massachusetts saw their wealth increase by a total of $17.2 billion during the first seven months of the pandemic alone. Our legislature has already overwhelmingly passed this twice at two constitutional conventions in 2019 and '21, with the last one, the last vote coming in at 159 to 41. By the way, according to the most recent data I've seen, Fall River has only eight individuals that would be affected by this amendment. And now I'd like to ask my friend and schoolteacher to correct any mistakes that I've made and talk to you about how this could positively affect our public education system.
So, good evening. It's been a while since I've been before you. It's nice to see you this evening. So, in 2015, I was one of the 10 original signers on the citizens petition to bring the fair share amendment before the voters of Massachusetts. I signed on because, as an educator and as a parent, I knew that we needed to address the longstanding funding inequities that exist among communities. I believed then, and I still do today, that it was my responsibility to advocate for our kids to have a level playing field, and I certainly know that our families in this city could benefit from increased funding for pre-K as well as higher education. Since that time, as you know, the state passed the Historic Student Opportunity Act, legislation which updated the old school funding law. The new law includes a plan to fund K-12 education over seven years. However, it did not specify a source of revenue from which to pay for it. The fair share amendment would go a long way in helping to fulfill the promise of the Student Opportunity Act. The original fair share petition garnered over 150,000 signatures from Massachusetts voters, and it passed two constitutional conventions with overwhelming support. And there is strong public approval for fair share, as independent polling has found that 72% of Massachusetts voters support the passage. Fair share is a way to make long-term, sustainable investments and to contribute to our state's economic growth. While over 99% of us won't pay a penny more, we will all benefit from improvements in infrastructure, transportation, and public education. Thank you for listening to us tonight, and I hope you will sign on to the group in favor of this amendment.
Thank you. Counsel in seat three, Counsel Vice President Deion.
Good evening. Thank you for coming this evening. I just want to ask a couple of questions for clarification purposes. Obviously, I don't know anybody who would disagree with moving forward with this. My questions are, so the allocation to different municipalities would have a criteria, I imagine, as to how much each -- which each municipality would get within the state? That would be my first question.
So, I believe the money would go to the state, and then they would be required by, if this law passes, to dedicate it to only those expenses that are related to transportation and education. I don't think there is a formula spelled out for what money goes, what percentage of money goes where. That's my understanding.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's going to be basically on, like, a needs assessment would be done, you know, by the legislators, so different municipalities and communities would submit proposals for a certain level of funding, and then the legislature would have to weigh the needs of each community, is my understanding. Now, I don't know what the exact mathematical formula is.
Now, do you know if that would be, they would request a lump sum for all categories or if a municipality would specifically ask for certain dollar amounts for each category?
I think that has to be determined by the legislators if this is, if this passes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further from the counsel? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Jason Justino, 10 Tiffany Drive, and the subject is sewage.
Sorry about that earlier. First time coming here? Go down here? Yeah. Okay. I'd like to see. I don't suppose I need to do. Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Justino, and this is my husband, Jason Justino. We live at 10 Tiffany Drive. We are here in regards to ongoing flooding issue we've had since we purchased our home in July 2020. This home was newly built in 2017, and we're currently the second homeowners. As you can imagine, this was a big investment as a young couple and therefore had a lot of questions upon purchasing the home. We had asked our Realtor Ethan from Keller Williams and the seller's Realtor Nellie from Piva Real Estate Services if this home was in a so-called flood zone. We were informed it was not, and all information on any Realtor website in 2020 had shown the FEMA report for this particular address to be one out of 10 flood factors, since we are not near any bodies of water, swamps, or anything in that nature. Fast forward to finding out that our first rainstorm would be encountering flooding issues, especially when it rains heavily. We are extremely concerned since flooding, due to repeat exposure, flooding situations can cause incredible damage to a home's foundation, especially with repeat exposure and cuts off access to emergency services if needed. Transportation, since we can't even leave our homes, and it's super unsanitary when people's cities trash sewer waters floating around and that water entering into our finished basement. We have personally gone to City Hall in person and spoken with Paul Farland from the Water and Sewer Department. He was nice enough to take time out of his day to speak to us on the same day without a scheduled appointment. Mr. Farland mentioned he would have someone go out to the property, check surrounding catch basins. A few weeks later, someone by the name of Mark went out to the house and mentioned to me that he was going to have some of his guys go into the catch basins and look in with a camera. He did, but we never heard anything back from anyone, and we went to City Hall again. They basically told us there was nothing wrong. They said they didn't find anything in the catch basins, but there's clearly something very wrong, as you will see in these pictures. At this time, the water levels, at the time, the water levels are so high that we have to keep moving our vehicles further into the cul-de-sac to prevent any damage or to keep waking up in the middle of the night to remove water from the garage to prevent the watering, water to coming into our home any further, or not being able to use toilets due to them gurgling and filling up to the rim, to the point that now every time it rains, we have a hard time sleeping because we're constantly worried about what damage will going to occur this time, how much it's going to cost, or if we have to lose another day from work without no pay. Just this past September, we had damage to our newly vinyl fencing that we installed in November. A whole panel had to be replaced, and the claim was submitted to the city, not including all the damage that we had to our front landscape. This is not a way to live, especially when we have to pay so much for the home, including taxes, and we seem to be paying more taxes than our neighbors due to being the corner lot, but yet we're the only ones in the cul-de-sac that have to deal with these issues every time it rains. We just don't understand that if this street was in a so-called flood zone and was an ongoing issue for years, why were these new homes signed off to be built on this street in the first place, with the city knowing of the flooding issues in the area or better yet not disclose this information upfront? What should be one of the happiest times of our lives has been filled with stress, dread, overwhelming constant concern in regards to this matter.
10 seconds.
We all ask you from the bottom of our hearts if you could help us find a resolution to this ongoing issue. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Why recognize Counsel in seat five? I just want to point out that they have sent multiple emails with photos of all of the flooding at their home on Tiffany Drive.
Thank you.
Counsel in seat five, Counsel Lee?
Just a, just a question. Are there other people in your neighborhood having the same flooding problems, or is it only your property?
It actually builds up, like, right in front of our house. It's actually hard to even leave the house. It's like, literally, like, two to three feet.
But, yes, there, we've, we've spoken to neighbors, and they said that, yes, that they, this has been an ongoing issue, and they signed petitions in the past, and nothing has moved forward.
With, and just asking to the Counsel President, would the appropriate subcommittee, if there were a resolution, to try to address this further, would that be Public Works?
Yes.
Okay. Just making that, just making that question out there. Thank you for your time, and I'm really sorry about what you're doing there.
No, thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Nelson Bafwas, 210 Sunset Hill, and the subject is ARPA funds.
So, I'm here today to speak on an issue that I believe is appropriate, given the fact that the city is about to be receiving a second payment of the ARPA funds, and given the fact that the city council has appropriation authority, I think it's only appropriate that the city council ought to be in possession of, of that second payment, because I just find it appalling that we have a private organization in control of public funds. I think the taxpayers ought to deserve to know, to have more faith in this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, to make sure that what's being planned is only open. We got some details of what was going on, but I just, it doesn't sit right with me as a constituent that, you know, BCEDC is in, is in possession of this. A change needs to happen. More faith needs to be put into this, into this possession of this money, because it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing for our city to, to possess. So I think it's only appropriate that the city council ought to have a say into what goes into, into this money. And lastly, too, in regards to DIRF, DIRF's payment, the number that the voters voted for to pay for DIRF was $115. Not too long ago, Channel 10, right before the vote, when it was finalized, that was the number for seven years, $115. And I think it would also be appropriate that the city council ought to demand the mayor to come down before the vote of, of his budget to show the council, to show the people of what the number he had on his desk that he failed to provide down here at the joint meeting, because if it's more than $115, we all know what that, what that entails. He wants to dig in, dig into the pockets and give more handouts to his friends and pay more free cash into the budget, which is not what the people voted for. So I hope at some point this council demands to see that number, and if you'd be happy, I'd be happy to provide that article from Channel 10 with that number to validate of what I just said. I just think it's appropriate that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the school, for the students to enjoy the school, but if we're going to have transparency, this mayor needs to live up to that word and show the people the number he wanted to, but I know the real number, and I'll be glad to forward it to each and every one of you. $115 is what the people voted for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anything submitted?
No. Madam President.
Thank you. Next item, item two, is a discussion for Roselli Clark &amp; Associates' basic financial statements for year ending June 30th, 2021. For representative from Roselli and Clark, members of the administration, and if you would all please just give your name and address for the record.
Counsel President LeBeau, honorable members of the city council. City Administrator Aiken, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Terenzio Vopacelli. I represent the firm of Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates with offices in Woburn, Massachusetts, Shall I just go into the presentation?
If you would like to, yes.
We were engaged to perform an audit of the city's 2021 financial statements. This was the final year of a three-year engagement. The city's 2021 audited financial statements were issued on February 3rd of 2022. Our opinion was modified in the financial position, and results of operation of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority were not incorporated as a discreetly presented component unit. Outside of that omission, the financial statements were essentially clean. Required communications at the conclusion of an audit was provided to the city's mayor in a letter dated March 7th of 2022. I will just provide some of those highlights of our required communication. Management, which includes the folks at this table and as well as you all, are responsible for the selection and the use of appropriate accounting policies. In 2021, the city adopted a new accounting standard related to fiduciary activities. This accounting standard required a restatement of beginning balances of approximately $172,000, and this was consistent with virtually every one of our clients throughout the Commonwealth, very, very typical. Accounting estimates are an integral part of financial statements. Certain accounting estimates, as well as their disclosures, are more sensitive than others. The most sensitive estimates and disclosures pertain to the determination of the total pension liability, which is actuarially determined at the Fall River Retirement System. As of December 31st of 2020, which is the latest available information that's included in the audited financial statements, the total pension liability was $715 million, and the pension system had a net position of $336 million, resulting in a net pension liability of $379 million. The actuary estimates that the pension system was 47% funded at December 31st of 2020. The city's proportionate share of that net pension liability is approximately 91%, while housing is 7, diamond is 2. The determination of the total OPEB liability would be the second significant accounting estimate that we would disclose. The total OPEB liability is about $669 million as of June 30th of 2020, and the city has accumulated $767,000 to address that, which is currently 0.11% funded. It's important to note that in January of 2022, the city made certain changes to its retiree medical, that it was expected to reduce the total OPEB liability by approximately $100 million. At least, that was the figure that was preliminarily provided by the actuary. We'll have a better idea what that real number is in a few months. The third critical accounting policy and estimate pertains to management's estimate for the allowance for doubtful accounts. Currently, there's a $15.7 million allowance on loans, $3 million on parking tickets, $2 million on excess excise tax receivables, and a small amount related to property taxes, personal property taxes. The enterprise funds report a $683,000 allowance. We did not encounter any significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing a financial statement audit, and we're pleased to report that we had no significant disagreements with management in its accounting, financial reporting, and auditing matters. Thus concludes the required communication section of this presentation. The city's general fund, as reported in the audited financial statements that I believe each of you have, it varies slightly from your internal accounting in that, for gap purposes, your stabilization funds are included in the general fund. Your general fund in the audited financial statements reported an increase in, in fund balance of over $6.3 million in 2021, and that's a positive difference versus 2020 and 2019, which saw a $3.3 million increase, a $3.5 million increase. So for the last three years, you've had a nice steady rise in your general fund balance, which is quite positive. The city received in June of 2021 nearly $35 million in ARPA funds, for which it fully deferred those amounts, and was separately reported in the audited financial statements as a new major fund. The 2021 general fund budget reflected about a 4.5% increase from 2022, I'm sorry, from And in terms of budgetary performance, in fiscal year 2021, general fund revenues were consistent with budget, while expenditures were over $5 million under budget. That surplus was due primarily to a $3 million surplus in school transportation. Additionally, there were many departments that turned back funds due to cost containment, and the use of cares and other state and federal funds were expended in their place. Roughly one-third of the annual property tax levy is assessed to residential homes, as the city has significant commercial and industrial property tax base. Entering into fiscal 2022, for which we're roughly three-quarters of the way done, the city had a number of financial reserves. The general stabilization fund exceeded $9.2 million, which is $1.7 million greater than the prior year. Certified free cash coming into the year was $5.4 million in the general fund, $2.4 in sewer, $739,000 in water, and $557,000 in EMS. And as I previously indicated, a couple of years ago, the city set up a, an OPEB trust for which it's accumulated roughly $767,000 as of June 30th of 2021. The city reports significant long-term liabilities associated with its debt, as well as personnel-related obligations, such as complicated compensated absences, OPEB, and pensions. In its governmental activities, which is the full accrual side of the financial statements, and that's the, all of the city's operations excluding water, sewer, and EMS, these liabilities exceeded $1.1 billion at June 30th of 2021. The long-term debt, bonded in MCWT loans and whatnot, approached $358 million, for which $156 million is related to the, the general, general operations of the government, and the remainder is being held by the enterprise funds. In February of 2022, the city completed a general obligation bond placement, and placement, rather, and Moody's affirmed its credit score of A3. This signifies, in Moody's opinion, that the city has a strong capacity to meet its financial commission commitments, but maybe somewhat more susceptible to adverse effects of changes in economic conditions and circumstances than some of the hot, more higher-rated organizations. As I mentioned earlier, the net OPEB liability for the governmental activities exceeded $653 million at June 30th. For the entire city, it was $668 million. The net pension liability for the city exceeded $321 million in its governmental activities. The net pension liability for the city exceeded $321 million in its governmental activities, $346 million citywide. Right now, or as of December 30th of 2020, the actuary, the independent actuary engaged by the retirement system estimates that the system is 47% funded. As we previously mentioned, the state and local recovery funds of ARPA, the first installment was received in June of $35 million. The city's total direct award allocation is expected to be approximately $70 million. An additional $16 million is being directed, managed, and passed through by Bristol County. And those ARPA funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and fully expended by 2026. And we understand that the city is currently working to contract a resource to assist in administering accounting and reporting for that ARPA grant. And at that point, I relinquish to any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you. Councilman Seaman, Councilwoman Poirot.
Yeah, the question that I have, I forgot, I know you said Tony, I didn't catch the last.
Terenzio.
Terenzio, thank you for being here. The question I have is on the report that we received. The basis for adverse opinion, and it's relative to talk about the redevelopment authority, that, you know, there was no figures, et cetera, from them. However, the attorney for the redevelopment authority basically says that it's not a governmental union to require to have an audit. There was a law that came in that now they have to audit, but they didn't before, but that my understanding was that they're a separate entity and that they don't report to the city. So tell me what you think.
As I understand the way it's organized, the city has a modicum of control over that organization, and under accounting standards, it would have to be combined within the city's financial statements. This is not a legal question, this is more of an accounting presentation matter.
Well, that's not what their attorney said, because I contacted them when I saw this and wondered why they hadn't done an audit, or years ago, they didn't have to do an audit. But now, they do have to do an audit themselves, but that it's a separate legal entity established as a public body incorporation. The redevelopment authority are separate legal entities, and the city is not responsible for any debt, obligation, or liabilities of the redevelopment authority. So that confused me, because if they're not, then they're going to do their own thing, and they have to submit their audits, but it doesn't come into the audit that the city does.
I would have to speak with that attorney to actually see exactly what they're looking at, because again, this is an accounting standard, not a legal standard that we're referring to.
But I think they handle their own, so I'm not sure about that.
Point of information, if I may?
Sure.
So if you look at, a few years back, there was a discussion about that, and the RDA was supposed to have annual audits. They didn't do it for a time, but they were supposed to. And then the RDA voted to have the city do the accounting for them. So I would, just my opinion, unless the RDA, as it stands now, the board now, voted to separate themselves from the city and do their own accounting, which I don't know if they did or didn't.
That's what they did. So that's why they're saying that it shouldn't have been brought up, because when I saw it, I called redevelopment. But I would be interested in you checking.
So your information may be that they're still tied into the city doing the auditing, and then that would be a whole, that might be where the glitch is. That I rest.
But I would check. It's Attorney John Coughlin, and you can talk to Sarah Page, I would check.
I'm sorry, Attorney John.
Yeah, Coughlin. I would just check that. I had a question about that. I know that they didn't have to even do an audit, and then they said they did have to do an audit. So then they started doing it, but the audits hadn't been done for a few years, because it changed in '16, but they didn't do them. So when this redevelopment came on board and Sarah Page got in, she had to go back and do the ones from previous years that weren't completed, and then continue on to do it up to the present. I talked to her, Joe Marshall, and I talked to Joan Maderas, who are all members of that board, and I got the same information from all of them, because they weren't done, they had to go back and do them. But that they do it separately. But, you know, it's good for you to check.
Thank you.
If you find out, let me know, I always like to learn something.
I'll communicate through the management team.
Okay, oh, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah. Can let Bridget, this is.
Almond. Almond.
You can let Ms. Almond know, and she'll share it with us.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Anything further from the council?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Madam President?
Yes.
Attorney. One point of clarification on the redevelopment authority. As early as today, when we were looking at the 21 audit, and of course, most of us weren't around for the 21, fiscal 21, but we can read. And we plan on setting up a meeting with Redevelopment Authority, just to get some re-clarification of who's on first base.
Oh, great.
You know, and we, so that was discussed today with Bridget, so that we can set something up to at least get an idea where we're at, what votes they might have taken to exclude, or do they need to be excluded, you know, and as we approach for fiscal '22.
I should have just called you, Ed.
Yeah.
Because you're always on the money.
I mean, we'll get an answer on that and find out exactly what they did or didn't do. Little concern, you know, when we'll address it.
I should have mentioned it to you, and I apologize for not having reached out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item three is a discussion of proposed FY23 budgets for water and sewer divisions.
And ladies, if you would just introduce yourselves to the council. I don't, we have not met the auditor yet.
Yes.
And this is the first time that our new CFO is with us.
Stacy. Well, hi, my name's Ashley Pyres, new auditor.
How are you?
Hopefully you'll be appointing her later on, in a short time.
Depends how this goes.
And also, first time, new CFO's here, I think, too, besides your appointment, so, Ms. Almond, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, councilors, very much for having us here tonight. In front of you, you have the FY23 budget for community utilities, which includes the water department and the sewer department. If you'd like, I'll do a brief overview of the budget. So the sewer division budget proposed for FY23 is $26,603,402. That would be supported by a rate of $5.75. That's a proposed increase of eight cents from the prior fiscal year of FY22, and a stormwater rate of $47 per ERU per quarter. That is, that is no increase from what the current stormwater rate is. As you go through the budget, you'll see all the different line items within the budget are laid out, starting off with revenues, then moves through sewer indirect cost, as well as stabilization. Within the FY23 budget, we have continued to include the $100,000 transfer to stabilization that this council has requested us to include two years ago. As you move down the program salaries, then you go into water treatment expenses. Most of our expenses have stayed level-funded, except for some minor adjustments, one increased water and CSO charge within the sewer department. As most residents know, over the past couple of years, we've been replacing water meters throughout the city. That includes all city buildings as well, sewer plant being one of those. So we had to adjust for the, for an increase due to the new meters that were installed with more accurate readings. The sewer treatment plan expenses, again, majority of those are even straight across. We have increase in other professional services for increase in the contractual obligations for our ONM contractor, as well as there is an increase in the other purchase services, which is primarily our sludge disposal, and also the disposal of other trash that's developed through the wastewater process. There's also been an increase within the chemical line items from prior fiscal years. When this budget was first built, we best estimated what our chemicals were going to come in at, based on our vendors' estimates. Vendors' estimates, when we went out to bid, vendors' estimates seemed to be under what the actual bids came in at. Right now, we're dealing, all commodities are dealing in a very volatile market. That's something that, you know, we're dealing with, I'm sure a lot of other departments throughout the city are dealing with. So chemicals is one thing that we are watching and looking for preparations for. Other improvements was level-funded. Debt service was based off of the debt service anticipated to be charged within the FY23. One thing that I do want to note back in the revenue line item is the use of free cash or revenue. The, as was proposed in a draft proposal to the council last year, we did reduce the amount of retained earnings that we're using to support the FY23 budget by 10% from what was used last year. Our retained earnings did come in higher than that amount, higher than actually what we used last year as well. But I felt, based on the policy and the proposal that was, the draft proposal that was given to this council last year, that it was best to reduce it by 10% of what was used within last year's budget. So that's a brief rundown of the sewer budget for FY23. Within the water division.
Council President, can we just take that separately?
Sure.
Just so we're not jumping all over the place.
Nope. Yes, sir.
Did you want to speak, Counselor?
I can.
Counselor in C1.
Mr. Farland, thank you, and I appreciate the, you know, the reduction in the free cash. I know that was really a sticking point, and just establishing a policy for the retained earnings went a long way. Can you just tell me, and I ask this every single year, what is the, how much do you generate in terms of revenue for a one-cent increase in the sewer department?
One cent on the sewer is roughly about $26,000.
And then, in terms of your total budget, I know we had looked at it, because, you know, as we go through this, obviously, we don't want to see the ratepayers pay more money, but we'll get into water in a little bit, but both sewer and water, you've got a lot of fixed costs associated with the running of the operation for water and sewer, so trying to reduce the user rates is a little bit challenging, because obviously, you can't reduce the fixed costs. So do you have a percentage in terms of the FY23 proposed budget? What would be the fixed cost of the $26 million that we're seeing?
I did not calculate that out exactly, the FY23. Typically, in sewer, it runs us about 92% historically is fixed cost.
92%? Roughly? And then, and I apologize, I was looking at some photos on the flooding that we heard during the citizen input, but if you stated this, I apologize. In terms of the salaries, so I'm not seeing significant increases in the salaries, we, is there still negotiations going on with the unions? Is that why we're, and in some cases, they're going down versus going up? So the, you know, sewer plant has $480,000 for FY22, $461,000 for FY23.
Yeah, so the, which particular line item is?
I'm sorry, I was just, I mean, just in general, just salaries, but I was looking at the sewer plant and program salaries, just as an example. So the FY22 budget was $480,000, and the FY23 budget is $461,000. So I'm just trying to figure out what the decreases are, is it new positions? Did we not include cost of living adjustments that might have been agreed to in the collective bargaining agreement? Or do we have, is the, I just don't know where we stand with the collective bargaining agreement, so is it expired?
Nope, so that's still open, there hasn't been any increase this year. That's in negotiations right now, the collective bargaining agreement. Within the budget, I have carried 2.5% for those.
Oh, so you did build in?
Yes. A percentage increase, whether that is what is negotiated or not, is to be determined. The other change that you see was some changes from other personnel into salaries and wages back and forth. There was an open position when the FY22 budget was budgeted, it was filled in the FY23, which brought that down, so those are the changes. If you look at the bottom line item overall, there is a slight increase in that, if you look at the totally sewer plant and program salaries.
And then, I guess, one final question and then a statement. The other personnel costs in the same category that I was just talking about, sewer plant and program salaries, can you just speak a little bit to what exactly that is? It's gone from $36,000 to $71,000. Is that where you captured the increases?
Yeah, that's where you captured the increase. There is a line item that I carry there for part-time interns. If we do get co-op students or other students, intern students available to be able to come in, those are currently based in my budget, those are carried within those line items.
Okay, nice. I said I had one question and then a statement, I apologize. The stable, do we, we have a stabilization account, right? So the stabilization account for sewer, can you tell me what the balance is? And I saw $100,000 going in for the water, are we doing the same with sewer?
Yeah, so within the FY22 budget, both water and sewer, does have $100,000 that is budgeted from the operational budget to go into the stabilization fund. As was discussed, it seems not too long ago, as in front of you discussing the '22 budget, but we're going to be waiting till the end of the year to make that transfer to see how revenues fall due to the shortfall in the beginning of the year, due to not having a rate increase. Currently, what was in our accounts as of 1/4/22, so January 4th, 2022, sewer had a stabilization account of $718,345.
And that, you said, does not include the $100,000, right?
That does not include the $100,000 from the FY22 budget.
Okay, so, and then in terms, it looks like we're looking at an eight-cent increase for the user rate.
Yes, correct.
So if we did want to reduce that, we're talking about roughly 20, if we're looking at 92% of the $26 million, we're talking about $23 million off the table, right? So we got $3 million to play with to kind of reduce areas, and then outside of, obviously, salaries associated with, you know, personnel costs, that's really where we're going. Is there, if there were reductions outside of the fixed cost, where would you propose them to come from? And obviously, not having a number, like where would you start? Is there anywhere?
You know, I can tell you, there's no way that I would stop making any types of reductions within these budgets. These budgets, again, are prepared January, February timeframe. One issue that I'm running into right now is, as I mentioned earlier, my chemicals. One issue that I'm running into right now is, as I mentioned earlier, my chemicals, chemicals, the budget was built with the proposed increases that were, that were in there. We went out to bid early this year, hoping to capture, you know, some savings earlier. That did not come to fruition. Currently, the bids that we received were, in sewer, it was about two hundred thousand dollars over what is budgeted for chemicals. So already starting off, we're in a deficit in our chemicals. I would not make any recommendations for cuts within this budget.
So in terms of, and I'm just trying to anticipate, we, we know how this goes every year, right?
Yep.
So I'm just trying to anticipate and head off some, some of the questions, and so can, can you speak in terms of your staffing levels? Where do you feel your staffing levels are? Are you, are you at a comfortable benchmark? Are you below where you feel you need to be? I know you probably won't tell me that you're above where you, where you think you're going to be, so.
You know, I can tell you our staffing levels, so at our wastewater treatment plant, which is operated by Veolia, a private contractor, they provide all the labor in the O and M for the wastewater treatment plant. We are staffed thin, that is due to some open positions in wastewater. There's the same type of issue with getting the qualified licensed individuals to be able to operate the plant and the facilities. You know, right now, the labor market, I'm sure everybody has heard it and is experiencing the issues within the labor market and trying to hire labor to be able to perform work. And competing with other places out there and the rates that other places are paying. Again, right now, we're in a, everything is in a volatile time, whether it be commodities, whether it be labor, everybody is all over the chart, which makes it very tough for us to be able to get people in, or our vendor, Veolia, to be able to get people in. Office within my, within my, staff within my office, so the, the employees that work for the city underneath the sewer department, we are, we've spread very thin. You know, there's a lot of different regulations that continue to come down the pike, whether it be CSO notification that we're going to have to be dealing with in the near future. On the water side, we have lead issues that we have been dealing with and continue to deal with. The construction projects that we're continuing, continuing to do, you know, my office, my staff, of five people within, within my office, we manage both water and sewer budgets and over seventy million dollars of construction, ongoing construction projects right now. So it's not an easy feat for our staff right now. We are stretched very thin. Everybody, everybody puts in a lot of time above and beyond what, what's required of them, so.
And then I.
If that answers your question.
It does. I swear this is my final, final question. In terms of the, the ARPA money appropriations, how, how much has been set aside for to date? Because we've been hearing some, some items, but how much has actually been set aside for the sewer department? And then I'll ask the same question once we get to the water department, because, you know, I know we have the folks that come up before us as citizen input. You know, we were talking about that area last year and the year before that in terms of making sure that we try to identify, number one, some improvements for the, for the general area and not just that neighborhood, and then trying to find some additional monies. And then, obviously, we've got the ARPA monies that came down because I know there was significant costs associated with the, the repairs, right? So I had originally asked, and, and folks were trying to say, when you're looking at it from a, a return on investment or a cost benefit analysis, I had asked just to see what the impact would be for all the homes surrounded. I know it's only a couple neighborhoods specifically in the area, but I think when you look at the, the value associated with, with each house, the amount of taxes that are being paid, you know, I would make an argument that, you know, we shouldn't turn a blind eye to some of these projects, and I, and I think when you get, you know, it's free money. That's essentially what it is. It's, it's, you know, the federal government wants to print money and hand them out to, to the communities, we, we need to take advantage of it. And part of it is all the infrastructure product, and I think this, this entire council has been on, on the, on the same page in terms of how we want to see the ARPA money spent. I think it would be foolish for us not to really start investing and turning this money that is free, that there's no cost to, and I say the taxpayers, the local taxpayers, because I know the money's coming from taxpayers at the federal level, but, you know, at the, at the local level, there's no, there's no burden on the taxpayers, and we should be taking care of neighborhoods such as the individuals that came before us with the flooding, right? And other areas that we've just ignored because we don't have the, the funding to really kind of address it, or it's a larger project than we can really truly afford. So where do we stand in terms of the total appropriations to the sewer department?
So for the sewer department, currently, we haven't added any appropriations for work within the sewer department, within the water department. We've had the thirteen point five million dollars that was, that was provided, that was guaranteed by the administration. We are moving forward with design of the contract one, ARPA funding contract one. That is, was, when we put the numbers together, that was estimated at eight point five million dollars. That is under design. We're hoping to have a contract bid out by June. The problem that I'm seeing right now and across the board, it's the change in construction cost. You know, things that were estimated four months ago, six months ago, the numbers aren't, aren't going to be anywhere close anymore. I just heard about another community that bid out a, a large, a large water project, and the contractor went to purchase the pipe, order the pipe, and they were given a delivery date of September for water main that was expected to go in the brown this year. So supply chain issues causing an issue. When you run into supply chain issues, you run into cost issues. So, you know, that's what's projected right now, contract one. The other thing, as I said, I'm managing my staff and my staff's ability to be able to manage some of these contracts. Other ARPA money that has been allocated to us is through the state, through the state, there was, between principal forgiveness and ARPA, it was just under ten million dollars that was given to us for principal reduction on the contract two at the wastewater treatment plant. That was roughly about seven or eight million dollars. And then we also had, there was about a million that was allocated towards the Wilson Road Pump Station, which is currently out to bid. That was a combination of EJ principal reduction as well as, as well as the ARPA funding from the state. Within a more recent release that was given from the governor's office, I heard there may be more money coming from the state through ARPA for water work within the city. But we'll see when that money actually comes.
So I, I got to be honest, I, I think the entire council is still going to continue to advocate for additional ARPA monies coming down to, to water and sewer. I, I think that's something we want to see. But I will say, before I yield, that, you know, I'm, I'm pretty impressed that you only have a one percent increase in, in your, your budget, given especially, as you mentioned, the, the inflation that we're seeing in, in everything.
Yeah.
You know, just forget, forget the cost of living adjustments for, you know, our underpaid staff as a, as a stance, right? So two and a half percent increase is, is not going to even touch what you're going to have for healthcare increases, right? So everything that we're seeing has been significantly increased. The cost just to get, you know, equipment and materials has significantly increased, and to your point, the lead time to get these items is through the roof. So I, I just, I would just urge my, you know, my colleagues to, you know, just be cognizant of the fact that there are, this is very unique times in terms of, you know, the, the cost to do business, especially when you're dealing with a, a budget of, you know, ninety-two percent, roughly ninety-two percent of, of fixed costs. You know, when you see these types of increases, it's, we've, we've got to absorb it, right? So the, the revenue in, in terms of where we can generate the revenue, again, we are a municipality, right? We, we don't sell widgets, we don't sell a project, product, we can't increase, you know, the cost of our products, we don't have a profit margin. The only way we generate revenues is through fees and taxes, right? And unfortunately, nobody wants to see increases in fees, and nobody wants to see increases in taxes, and I, I think my colleagues will ask some, some difficult questions in terms of trying to hold everybody accountable, which I agree with, to make sure that, you know, the increases that we're having are going to benefit the, the end user, and that we've been as efficient as possible and tried to streamline some of the, the costs that we see here. But again, as I mentioned from prior years, when we was dealing with the water and sewer, there's not a, not a whole lot, it's a very lean budget, in my opinion. Some people may disagree with me, but it's a very lean budget on, on both sides, so I appreciate that, and I'll yield and listen to my colleagues.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor in seat three, council vice president, Deanne.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Welcome for your first meeting, Ms. Alman, Ms. Pius.
Thank you.
My first question probably should go to the city administrator. After last year's debacle, I want to clarify what taking, taking action is. We have forty-five days within submission to act on the water and sewer budget, so when did the clock start? What constitutes taking action? To make sure that we stay within our parameters.
Yes, please. Madam clerk, you have that date as well, don't you? I'm sorry? You have the date, the forty-five day date for water sewer? You had sent it to me?
Yes.
It was March fourteenth.
If the date was, which is this letter of March fourteenth, does it count all days or just business days? If it counts all days, we're thirty-three days in? If it's only business days, we're twenty-four days in?
So my count, I think we talked about this.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So my count is that the, the deadline would be, I think, Thursday of this week, the twenty-eighth. So we are more or less up against it, but certainly in advance of there being, of us being out of town.
Okay, so in terms of the city council, taking action, what constitutes taking action?
So the council has three options, as we all know.
Go ahead.
We can reduce, reject, or approve, and I would suggest that any three of those things constitutes an action.
Okay, I, so I'm just going for clarification. We all know what happened last year, and, and I'm not taking any chances this year on anything. All right, so with that said, the thirteen million dollars in ARPA funding that you were originally allocated?
Yep.
You didn't actually end up with the thirteen million, it was reduced to the eight point five, is that correct?
It's never been told to me that it's going to be reduced. I've been told that that additional funding is sitting there. Again, I'm trying to manage projects within my division, I don't want to take on more than we're able to manage. So that's why I have not moved forward with what I'm calling contract two of the ARPA funding.
Okay. Yeah, and the bill that you were referring to is a three point five billion dollar economic bill, I have it here. Forward legislation. Within this, it also has a hire now program, which provides grants to employers to train and hire new workers of twenty-five million. Is that something that your department could utilize if, if the city were so inclined as to apply for this funding?
You know, training of our operators, both water and sewer, is something that we're always striving to do. Currently, there's free classes that can be taken at BCC through a grant program for students there to be able to achieve up to their grade-two license through the Blue Center at BCC. We've worked with Durfee, and we actually were working to get two students dual enrolled, seniors at Durfee, as well as going to BCC to try to move that forward. One thing that I have been in touch with is the local, the training office within City Hall, we've had conversations with them in the past. You know, there may be the opportunity for funding, but the tough thing is getting a large enough group of people together that would want to take this specific class to be able to hold our own class. We do provide funding to any of our staff members that are interested in getting training for, to become a licensed operator.
In terms of, yeah, there's also sixty-four for clean, clean water projects, one point four million for culvert projects, there's, there's quite a bit in this bill that I would hope that the city could capitalize on.
Yeah, so is that the bipartisan infrastructure law, the federal bill that you're talking about, or is that the allocation of?
This is the Baker Polito administration, three point five billion dollar economic development.
Is that the most recent one that was released?
Yes, this one was released April twenty-first.
Okay, so that's the one that's just released, and from my understanding, there is funding in there for some of our water projects, lead service removal, as long as the whole entire bill's approved as proposed, from my understanding. So yes, that is a very good, you know, culverts, we did apply this year for the grant culvert program for one of our culverts, you know, grant funding, from my standpoint, you've got to understand grant funding is something, Jane DiBiase, our grant writer, I think she's been living in my office, I've been living in her, the past month and a half, we've probably submitted about twelve million dollars in grant applications in the past month and a half, where we have, we have a lot more in the near future that we are submitting, that's something that, you know, if my ratepayers don't have to pay for it, I love those projects all the more.
It works for me as well. I've been a very strong proponent of ARPA funding going to your department.
Without a doubt, yes.
And, you know, I mean, we, we did say last year, you know, what we could do last year wouldn't affect last year's rates, but moving forward and in the future, we certainly could affect rates in the taxpayer, so that's basically what I'm looking for. My last question is, the, the water department owns over a hundred properties within the city of Fall River, correct?
I, I don't know the number off the top of my hand, but we do own a fair number of properties with it, yes.
And either have already or will be purchasing another sixteen acres?
We have proposals to purchase some, which is off of Yellow Hill Road, that is a backlot that's developable on a house, it's within our Copacabana watershed adjacent to bio reserve land.
Okay, I guess my question would be, do we now, or are there any plans to utilize these properties as a cost-saving measure in terms of solar farms, wind energy, anything like that could, that could reduce expenses or, or reduce costs? Or, or to derive income somehow from some of these properties that we, that we hold?
So a lot of the properties that we do hold, and we're crossing into water, but I'm, I'm perfectly fine answering, answering this question, the questions, the, a lot of the properties that we do own, so forty-five acres over on the other side of the north of Tupper, those are all lands that are part of the bio reserve, those have specific conservation restrictions on them. When they were in, Ms. Sutero can speak very well about this, because he, he was here when the bio reserve was created, created eighteen thousand acres, which opened up a lot of the water department lands for passive recreation use, hiking trails, biking trails, hunting, and other uses within the conservation restrictions. The land that's out in that area, the conservation restriction would, wouldn't, the conservation restrictions wouldn't allow any, any use for those, for those types of uses. Other properties that we, that we own either in the city or, in the city proper or around the city are typically for wetland conservation, drainage reasons, or, you know, our water tanks or properties that we, that we have pump stations on or other things. For, you know, so solar use, we're always looking to possibly, you know, a new water maintenance building, that building is being designed so that the roof could be leased out for potential solar use. We do have solar panels down at our water treatment plant currently. There was a study done years ago about wind being installed down at the wastewater treatment plant, and then there was a mortuary and put on that size wind towers within the city in that area, so.
With the new push with wind energy, do, has there been any discussion on those restrictions, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
That that might change?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because, yes.
If I may. We also aggressively go for tower rentals on our water. We also aggressively go for tower rentals on our water tanks, and those have been producing revenue since the advent, the move into the city of cellular telephones. So we're taking advantage wherever we can, but I'm always on the lookout for additional revenue, because that's the hard part.
Right, right.
We, Paul and I were talking this evening, if I could just take a second, and we were comparing gallons pumped per day. And when I was actively working, I was running sixteen-three, sixteen-four, sixteen-point four million gallons a day. Paul's pumping about nine and a half to ten on a, on a stretch. All that went away was the industrial base of Fall River at that time, the dye houses and the finishing houses. And the only thing we're left with is one finishing today, and we were, we were discussing that. Our problem is, is one of, we need to increase sales. And when I say we're constantly looking at ways to do it, we are, but you're somewhat limited. You certainly don't want to clear cut your watershed to, to, you know, put up solar. You wouldn't be able to do it in the first place, and it wouldn't be a practical or, you know, a responsible move by the water board. But believe me, we've skyballed some, some things. It's, it's tough. What we need is a big buyer. That's, you know, I'd love to see a brewery, love to see a bottling plant. It's just not in the cards, Counselor.
Well, maybe we need to start going out and looking for that. We did in the past have breweries in Fall River.
I'm sorry?
We did in the past have a brewery in Fall River.
No.
Heffenruffer?
Which one? Brown?
We had soda plants, too.
You had Heffenruffer brewery down on bottom of Pierce Street.
Mm-hmm.
And if you go back, you also had a Coca-Cola bottling plant on DeBauld Street. I don't, oh, you had Frosty Beverage, I believe, down in Quickishan. But that, you know, what we need is, what we missed back about two thousand and four, when Sam Adams was talking about going into a sonnet to the wirehouse or property over there, they were going to use a rail spur there, and we were talking about directly hooking them up. That would have been sweet. But it's, it's just one of consumption. We don't sell enough product right now.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Perry, did you have your hand raised?
I did.
That's on seat seven?
My turn?
Yes.
We should sell our own water, since we have so much of it. But bottle it and sell it, employ people, Fall River water. I think that my colleague in seat number one said it best. If we have to have an increase, the end users need to see the results. And I've got to tell you, I'm, I'm a little disappointed with the calls that I have gotten as of late. Got a call from a gentleman, everybody on the council knows who it is. He got a water bill for twelve thousand dollars. He owns a couple of pieces of property in the city, in a business. He said, bills come in, we pay them, they go out. Never got a bill, but he got a demand. And he hadn't paid his water supposedly for five years. How do we let somebody not pay water for five years and not shut their meter? Do we do that?
No, so that's not, that's not a typical circumstance that we have. That particular customer, there was the house, and if I'm, if I am talking about the customer that, that you are, the house was told that it was turned off to us. It was on our records of being turned off. We were called out there to turn it off. A number of years ago, we were never told that the, that it was turned back on. It was never alerted to us, so there was no readings that were being done on the usage of the water that went through the meter. When the property owner called for a final reading on that meter, we went out, and all the water that passed through that meter over the prior years was then registered and billed.
But then, it was going to be a demand plus interest? That's not fair. Mr. Furlan, that's not fair. If there was a mistake and we didn't know, you got to eat the mistake. And I mean, I know that it was rectified, and, you know, that doesn't have to happen, but they'll pay it all off during the year. Now I get another one at President Avenue. So the first water bill they get is eighty-three thousand dollars. For three months, clearly, that's a lot of water. That's a mistake. They fixed that. October's bill is two thousand five hundred dollars. They get their bill in December, a thousand five hundred dollars. I know they changed the meter on that one. But again, whenever anybody's water bill is high, you know what the classic line is? You got a toilet running. You got a leak somewhere. That's all the time. But, to me, things like this don't show the end users that we care about them. I understand that we have to increase. You have a problem at the wastewater treatment plant with keeping employees there, because they can get a lot more money going elsewhere, and they're going. And when the state came down and evaluated us, it's adequate, conditional, and inadequate. And we fell to conditional. And they cited it's because of management, finances, and staffing. So something needs to be done. Now, I know Frederick Street has been a nightmare for us. But now I get a call from Frederick Street, their building in the back, there's a water thing that goes by, brings all kinds of mosquitoes. The man has a trailer camper. The rats that they're getting there in that water, they chewed all the wires in the camper. They even chewed the bristles off of the toothbrushes. Not right. Now you had a young couple, bought a house in Fall River, going a lot, pays a little more on taxes, but they've called several times. I mean, we had the pictures here. You might want to take a look at the pictures. I wouldn't want to live that way either. And when we put in, it was Ray Mitchell put in a resolution, I think I might have co-signed it with him, and it was about if somebody gets a really high water bill, that you can go in and appeal one time. The way that it was supposed to work was that if you went into appeal, the water department, the board, would take the average of the entire year, divide it by four, that would be your bill. That's not what happens. That's not what happens.
Right, so the, so the appeal process, what was presented to the council, approved by the council, and just to talk a couple of things about what you said, that is, the proposal that was given to the council at the time, and what still stands is that there is an average taken of the prior bills. Once the leak stopped, there's an average taken of the prior bills. Fifty percent of the, of the overage, above the average, is credited. And that's what's done in our policy, and that's what was proposed to the council. I've gone back and I've seen, I've pulled out what was actually, what was actually given to the council and approved to the, by the council.
I just think it's not fair. Go by the average, and then you go fifty more, whatever. The other thing was that the water department was supposed to let the owner of the property know, if you see that person's water rate, their usage is increasing, to let the person know. You call them, say, hey, you're using a lot of water. I mean, I know in Canada, when people were renting houses and growing pot inside of these houses, the way that the police caught them was because of the amount of water that people were using and the amount of electricity. So there's got to be a way to measure that. And I think something like that should be done. People don't mind paying more, and water is, is, that's, that's sacred, as far as I'm concerned. If you don't have water, you have nothing. But I understand what some of these people are feeling. I know what, you know, what the Mr. and Mrs. Justino are feeling. And if you've got ARPA money, and Attorney Atkins is here, a city administrator, what? Did somebody say, did I say Atkins? Did I say it right? Atkins?
I'll answer anything.
Okay. Well, Seth, I think you should take back a message to the mayor, that the council wants some of this ARPA money spent on resolving problems like this for some people.
Counselor, I appreciate your concerns. I absolutely do.
It's the money that you're using.
But we're on the water and sewer budget.
We are on the water and sewer, and all I'm talking about is water and sewer.
I understand, but we're on the budget.
That if people are going to pay it, if people are going to pay it, and people are going to pay more, then they deserve a service. And I don't feel they're getting it. So that needs to be clarified, and if we have the ARPA money, it should be used. Now, when you talk about sewer, you said Viola. Isn't there someone else that just bought that? Didn't someone else take over Viola's contract?
No. No, Viola is still in, their contract goes out till twenty twenty-three.
Is there somebody else coming in? Is there talk of that?
There's no, there's no talk of it. Once, once it's required, we'll put out an RFQ for procurement, but there hasn't been any RFQ issued or anything yet.
I heard somebody else was involved there now.
No, so the only thing that did happen is Viola procured, which is a worldwide corporation, procured Suez, which is another worldwide corporation.
Right.
But it's, they're still underneath it.
So Viola bought Suez?
Yes.
I thought Suez bought Viola.
Not from my understanding, no.
Oh, all right. Because we really need to pay attention down there as well. But to me, you need to spend some of this money on making sure that you have the staff in the wastewater treatment plant, because we shouldn't be in conditional, we should be back inadequate. And it amazes me that the quality of our water is good, and even though the state mandates that we put other chemicals in it, that we have good water, we don't need those other chemicals, but the state mandates that we put them in. That, to me, is a little ludicrous.
The state of Massachusetts is a very, very regulated state on both water and wastewater. It's continued.
I understand that.
Yeah, you know, we currently deal with all the regulations that they continue to throw at us.
But it's like we're spending money on chemicals that thankfully our water doesn't need. Maybe there's an oxygen in it or something, and we still have to do it. I'm going to tell you that I'll support an increase, because I, I really think that you need one. But I'm doing this halfway, because I really feel that people need to have problems resolved. People need to get a call when their water bill is going high. They need to know that. Is there a way for you to figure that out?
Yes, so through our new, through the new metering system, we do get, we do get information, we get reports. We have been reaching out to those customers historically. We've done letters, and that's how we continue to do it as of now. We've been working on building our, I would love it to get to a point where we can email customers. A lot more people are using that as a method for communication now, but it's building that email database of our twenty-four thousand accounts to be able to get to that point. But that is something that we're working towards.
The sooner the better. I think that's important to the people.
Yes.
But other than that, I, I will support it. Oh, one last question I have. I don't know. The building that you're building up in the water department?
Yes, the new water.
Was there CSO money used there for, for the sewer?
So the sewer department is funding a portion of that building for storage of their equipment, as well as the maintenance facility that will maintain their equipment.
How much?
Two, two point five million.
So the sewer department's paying two point five million to store stuff?
To store stuff, because of the wash bay that's there, as well as the maintenance facilities that will be working on servicing and repairing their vehicles, yes.
And that was voted on by the council? I think it might have been the year that I skipped.
The, that was part of.
So you CSO money?
So that was part of the hundred and twenty-three million dollar authorization, which include storage of VAKT trucks and stuff like that. That was all included within that large authorization that was voted on on referendum ballot November twenty seventeen.
Seems a little odd to me, but I wouldn't have voted for that if I was here, so, just sharing that with you. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, five, Counselor Lee?
Thank you. Thank you for coming up here, talking to us for a little bit. One of the, when, when ARPA was mentioned by counselors in seat one and seat seven, I remembered the state of the city addressed by the mayor, and he stated something that was going to come down from congressional delegation, ten million dollars or so that could be used for any type of city needs. I asked at that, at that time about roads. However, do we have, I don't, maybe you don't, maybe, maybe Mr. Aiken has it, do we have an idea of when that money was coming, or did it already come to the city?
This is the federal?
Yep, about ten million dollars or so, I believe, was stated in the state of the city. And I'm just curious as to, did we receive that funding, or has it come down the line yet, or?
So if you're talking about federal money, there's been conversations with Representative Oshinclaw and other members of the delegation about earmarks. If you're talking about that, that's not settled yet. With regard to the bill that was filed on the twenty-first by the governor and the lieutenant governor, there are some proposed expenditures for lead service reduction in there, and that's a significant amount. So I'm not exactly, I'd have to go back to the speech to find out exactly what ten million dollars he's talking about, because I think that both on a state and federal level, there's the hope that there's, that there's some money coming.
Okay, thank you. The last time we had this conversation about an increase request, you stated to us, I believe, and please correct me if I'm not, if I'm not accurate, you stated that the debt service were, was one of the major reasons why we needed to see an increase. Is that correct?
So to see an increase, not necessarily on the debt service this year, but debt service does go up and down depending on when loans come on board and when loans go off. Debt service is a major portion of our budget.
Yep, okay. Regarding the sewer disposal, do you have, do you, I know that sewer disposal was, was one of the reasons why we had increases in the past, meaning that?
Sludge disposal.
Actually, I'm sorry, yeah, sludge disposal. So that, that went from one cost to another, to a significant increase, once we had to start shipping it to, I think at the time it was Maine, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yes, so in March of twenty sixteen, we had to shut down our incinerator down at our wastewater treatment plant. So our incinerator was taking our sludge, essentially burning it off and leaving us with ash. Once our incinerator was shut down, now our sludge is taken primarily to Cranston to an incinerator that they have there. If it's not taken to Cranston, we also have other facilities in either Norgutuck, Connecticut, Churnkey landfill up in New Hampshire, and there's a couple of outlets that are around.
And it went from the, the figures back then, when you, when you didn't have to ship it out?
Yeah, I believe it was roughly about nine hundred thousand or so, eight hundred and fifty to run our incinerator, two, about two million for offsite disposal.
So, so that increase is still in effect, correct? We still, it costs about two million dollars to ship our sludge out, and that's, you know?
About two point two, two point three we're spending.
Now, is that, is that on our budget here? Is that indicated anywhere here in our budget?
Yep, so that is, well, it's a particular line item that has sludge as well as some other disposal cost in it. That would be under other purchase services.
Okay.
So that has sludge as well as rags and trash and other things that we dispose of from the wastewater treatment.
And, and that's one of the things I was looking at here, is some of the increases that we saw from, from the FY twenty twenty-two to FY, to the proposed budget of FY twenty twenty-three. So other professional services, the increase is estimated roughly around three hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, a little bit under that, but yeah.
What, what creates that increase?
So that, essentially, are disposal costs for trucking the sludge, as well as what the end facility is charging us to dispose of that.
So the increase is three, about three hundred thousand dollars, and then the increase for the other purchase services is a hundred and twenty thousand, correct? Or around that figure?
So other professional services is an increase of about three hundred thousand dollars, so that went from seven point one to seven point four, if that, if that's what you're targeting.
Yep.
And so if you want, other professional services is primarily a Viola contract.
Okay.
So that's the contractual increase, that's the three hundred thousand dollars I.
Is that incrementally?
Roughly. It's, it's been pretty much a, a straight increase for the past, I think we're going into year eight of our contract, and it will be, again, we'll be rebidding that contract coming up. I believe RFQs will be going out next year for a new contract within the following year. Other purchased services is the sludge and trash disposal, and yes, there was an increase in that. And again, that was due to, you know, you gotta think, we're getting anywhere from nine to 12 tankers that'll leave in our facility today having to go to Rhode Island. So with fuel costs and everything else, you know, you see an increase there.
Some of the, some of the actuals line up fairly well with what was proposed in 2022. But some of them, some of them kind of, some of them have increases. And just some of the ones, if you can explain some of these, like the actual for FY 21, for the line item engineering and architecture service, you're somewhere just over 8,700, but the proposed budget is 20,000. So I was just curious as to what would create an increase for that.
So again, those are line items.
That's right at the bottom on.
Yep, I got it. So in there, we, we carry different line items, MS4 NITDS permit compliance. So MS4 is the municipal sewer, small sewer stormwater system regulation that was put into effect about four years ago. Every year, we hire a consultant to assist us with doing the training for our staff that's required for that regulation, illicit discharge training, tracking of illicit discharge, going through testing all of our discharges that, that go out into the stormwater system. So sometimes, particularly years, if we're able to do more of that training in-house or use previous things, we take advantage of that by doing it in-house and not having to use that consultant as much. So that's why you would see an actual savings within that line item.
What do you do with that saving? Is that what gets contributed to the 100,000 that you allot for stabilization or things like that?
No, if you look stabilization, if you go higher up within your, within your budget, right there is a transfer to stabilization of $100,000. So any savings that you see from that actual compared to what we actually, what was budgeted, that's essentially, will end up at the end of the year, getting turned out as free cash or retained earnings. You know, it, it's tough with an enterprise fund, because you have your, you have your expenses and you have your revenues. So your enterprise fund, your revenues need to be higher than your expenses, so that you cover all of your, or they're supposed to be exactly the same. But as you go through the fiscal year, if you, you know, a lot of people in my department know me as being very frugal. So anywhere where there's savings, I will try to pick up those savings. So that may end up, you know, and it's tough looking at this budget, and I hate using this excuse, because everybody's sick and tired of hearing it. When you're talking FY 21, which was, you know, the start of COVID, those numbers are all over the place.
That's, those are valid, those are valid reasons. No one here should be.
Yeah, I know. It's just in society, everybody says, oh, I'm sick of hearing the COVID excuse. But, you know, when you're talking 2021, 22, we're on a roller coaster here. We're riding a wave coming out of COVID budget, straight across the board. So it's, it's a tough thing. And we're riding right now, like I said, the volatile market with the, with supplies and everything else. That's still an effect from COVID.
So two more, two more line items that I did see, just a significant, just a, just a disparaging number between the two, the actuals and what was budgeted, even for FY 22 compared to 21, postage.
Yep.
You go from about 11,000 here, and your proposed budget was 34. And then you also proposed it again for FY 23, and I'm just, you know, there's a, that's a $20,000 difference there. So I was just.
Yeah, so postage is a shared cost between water and sewer. So depending on the year, revenues and stuff like that, you gotta make a determination where the majority of that postage comes from, or it gets, it gets shared between the costs. So, you know, I'm sure if you look in the prior year, I believe actually sewer postage was, was higher than the budgeted amount in that prior fiscal year. But that's a shared cost, so sometimes it hits water differently than it hits sewer.
And then the last one would be where it says other improvements, and that's in the plant capital line.
Yep, so other improvements, that's our capital line item that we carry.
So you go from 34, about 35, a little over 35,000, but the proposal was 80?
Yep. So again, so our capital budget is, is larger, larger things that we, that we like to purchase. Again, you know, you're talking FY 21, the last three months, four months of that budget was, was locked down on COVID. So a lot of stuff at that point was put on hold, you know, totally stopped, because A, you know, either there wasn't any place to get particular items. There wasn't any suppliers to be able to provide supplies at that time. So some stuff was put on hold. That's why that was, that was reduced. What is budgeted within the FY 23 for capital is a medium duty pickup truck, emergency repairs. So that would be if a sewer line breaks, or we have to hire a private contractor to come in to do some type of emergency repair within the sewer or wastewater system. Detention basins and swale improvements. So if we have a small project on detention basin or a swale that needs to be dealt with. And then we're also carrying a budget for CSO notification, which is a new DEP regulation that's coming out that we're gonna have to deal with, full notification whenever any of our CSOs are activated.
And I tried to make sure all my questions were related both to the, to the budget and not going, you know, not going off on things, but.
I appreciate that.
You know, my, at the very first ARPA meeting we had, I was on, I was up on a stage saying that the sewer and water needs this money more than possibly any of the other ones when it comes to taking care of our communities. That, and, and we would like to see allotted public safety as well. I believe that those two areas, that ARPA funding should be dedicated mostly to places like Tiffany Drive and some of the other places that we've, that we've, the entire council for the most part has walked around and, and seen these neighborhoods. It's, it's, it's bad. It's rough. And I, and I just urge the mayor's office to really consider some of this funding going to some of these, to many of these areas, if not all of them. Because this, we don't know when this kind of funding is gonna come down the line again, and you see how tight everything is when it comes to this. So that I yield, and I won't spend much more time on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, guys, for coming down and going through all this thoroughly. Quick question. The sewer department's paying $2 million for the building that we're building. What's the total cost on that building?
So the total construction cost, the contract is 8.65, was the construction contract cost.
How many square feet is it?
20,000 square feet, roughly, with a second floor on a portion of it.
Okay. One, I think I just wanna go back to Counselor in seat seven was talking about the individual there, that I guess the meter was shut off or was disconnected. What, you give us now that once the meter was shut off, it was turned back on, but no one knew it?
Yeah, so if we get a call for a shut off, a property is abandoned or something like that, we get a call for a shut off in the rec, in our notes on the account, again, if this is the account that was speaking.
I don't know who it was. Unless you said I would know. My colleagues in seat two and three know. I don't know.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna know, but I just wanna know how the process went.
I remember a recent case, you know, it was a while ago, where property was abandoned. We were called out there to turn off the water. We went out, turned off the water at the curb stop. It seems as if there may have been repairs made to the building or something like that. The curb stop was turned on. We were not notified.
Who, who turned it on?
I can't tell you.
Who has the authority to turn it on?
So the water department is the only one that has the authority to turn it on. If anybody else does turn it on, it would be a violation of the ordinance. So again.
So do we have a locking system in there, a locking mechanism that, this is not the first time this has happened. Mr. Terry, I think you remember before, there was someone that turned in the meter, and then they had three years of free water. Remember that one? So who, how does that work? Do we don't have a locking mechanism when someone turns off, the city turns off the water, and then you can just go back there with a wrench and turn it back on?
So we go out, and it's the curb stop, typically the curb stop on the street, you know, it has a penta bolt on it. No, we don't, there is no locking mechanism or anything that we have to be able to lock people out of that, you know, again.
Well, we're not locking people out of anything. They're requesting it be turned off, and we're turning it off.
Yep.
And somehow, it gets turned back on, and we don't know about it. So we're not locking anybody out of anything. If it's turned off, it's turned off.
Correct.
Someone's turning it on without permission or consent from the city.
Correct.
And it's costing the city a lot of money. And people's rates are going up, because we're not maintaining and watching that. And it's not the first time it's happened. That's why I get a little upset about it. So what do we do to check on that? Do we go by periodically and see that it's still turned off or it's turned on? I mean, that's not hard to do. How many people turn off the water services throughout the course of a year? I'm guessing not very many.
You know, you, you gotta think about all the, all the abandoned, it would be, you know, all the abandoned properties or unoccupied properties throughout the city, you know, that are turned off or any that are under major renovation or anything like that. You know, with over 20,000 accounts to monitor who's particularly on and who's off would be a tough thing with our current staffing that we do have.
I understand.
I, I, trust me, your frustration is shared, because that is not something that, you know, a meter being turned on like that, us not getting, getting the readings through our system is, is something that, that is extremely frustrating. Yes, you know, luckily that house did have a meter, and luckily we were able to fill that.
There's been other cases where houses did have a meter.
That, that, that could be a different story.
Yeah, well, it's happened. So I think what we need to do is if we get a call that's turned off, I know you don't, I mean, let's, let's find out a way that we can at least periodically have someone go by and check and see whether there is water running in the building or not, because that's, that's a serious concern. It's not fair to the people that are paying, that are doing it the right way, that their rates are going up. I don't wanna go on too much about, because you guys explained it, there was a lot of questions to ask, but you know the council's gonna put a resolution together to try to help those poor people up there with the situation, and I know it's not the first time. You're aware of it, correct?
Yes.
Just yes or no? Is there a solution? Can we help them out?
So their problem stems, stems from the issue in Stafford Square.
We are addressing that issue, aren't we? Are we making changes in Stafford Square?
So we have done a study of Stafford Square, the, the work to correct that issue. The estimates have come back at, to do the whole entire project at about 45 million.
All right. Well, I'll wait for what comes out of that.
Yep.
Meeting, and we'll try to discuss it, but I think we should probably do something to try to help people like that and everyone else that's in the same situation. It's not fair to them. Not fair at all that they weren't warned and that they didn't know that this is a problem, and let's try to resolve it. You know, it's, maybe we can use some federal money, some grant money. Let's see what we can do, because I'm sure it's not the only place in the city where it's happening. Stafford Square is a major problem.
Yeah, correct.
All right. With that, I yield. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, did you say that item was already in committee?
It is. It's in the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
For Tiffany Drive?
What's in committee?
The resolution, I believe.
The resolution for the, the folks that have the flooding on Tiffany Drive. It's in Public Works?
Yes, good, thank you.
I mean, Stafford Square is here, Tiffany Drive is here. Water goes up. Not a scientist on water, but usually water flows down here. It's in committee. I'm sure they'll figure it out.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Napoza.
Mr. Furlan, I just, I really, easy question for you. So the new metering that's happening, the new meters you're putting in, does that at all help the issue that we're talking about with the water being used without knowledge?
Yeah, so the new system that we're installing, and we're still getting, we've finally completed the installation of all of our eight new AMR boxes throughout the whole entire city. We've replaced roughly about 10% of the meters, the ones where we had to enter the house. One of the issues that we did find through that replacement program is we had pretty low numbers of return from our customers, you know, to be able to allow us to enter the property. That's something that we're gonna be working with our staff to be able to get into those properties. But with that new system, that will, that it, we're just fine tuning some of the reporting and stuff like that, but that will hopefully help us with, whether it be a reverse flow or whether it be a water potentially on a meter that should be off as long as all of the equipment is working and not disconnected, yes.
And that's like an automatic reporting process?
Yeah, so that goes.
Back to you.
That goes into a cloud, a system that's a computer system in the cloud by Neptune, which is the meter company. That's also how we get all of our reads for our billing.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So just to piggyback Counselor Kamara's question, which I was gonna ask about these, these people here, because we all looked at the pictures. It's just a horror show, the way they're living. So you said it's all related to Stafford Square, and it's a $45 million project. So is anything short of that that we can do to help them? And I know it's going to committee, and it's gonna be discussed, but I might not watch the meeting. I'm not a member of that committee. So I would like, maybe, I know this is on the fly, but you're, you're the expert in the city that handles these problems? So is there anything short, putting a pump in the station down there, or just doing something to, to alleviate that problem down there? Because I think it's our responsibility as a city to handle things like that for these people who are so, so aggrieved.
Yeah, so it, it's a very tough situation, because you end up getting, you know, it's a huge drainage area that starts all the way back up at Locust and Oak Grove. That's kind of where this drainage area starts, that, that comes down to this area. And it comes down, some in culverts, some over the roadways, comes down into that area. There's actually a major culvert that, right where J.C.'s is on Bedford Street, a large culvert that comes down. And there's three culverts that come together from the old quarry where the housing complex is. Those culverts come together in the middle of Bedford Street. They continue across over next to the Tiffany Drive area, and they, and they continue down in some culverts in Stafford Square. Problem is, you have so much water coming into this area, into these culverts, that are undersized for the high intensity rainstorms. You know, reporting that I've got, I know that on September 2nd, when we had six and a half inches of rain in six and a half hours overnight, that these people were affected. There was another later storm that was a high intensity storm, that these, this area was affected. I've been through on smaller or moderate rainstorms, which the drainage within that area is, is functioning well. You know, it's these high intensity rainstorms that, that, you know, we have issues with.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Furlan, but is there something short of 45 million that we can do to alleviate the problem there?
You know, for this whole entire drainage area, that's the fix for that whole entire area. The whole entire project is broken up into different phases, so going up to that particular phase may be less. It takes up, it's certain, you wanna start at the bottom and work your way up. So there is a full report and a study that was done on that area. But, you know, I can prepare a presentation for the Public Works Committee.
I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah.
And I agree with Counselor Lee, and I think it was Counselor Kadim and Counselor Deion and others on the council, that the ARPA money, I mean, we've had flooding issues. Counselor Lee has mentioned it, I think, a million times, last budget cycle. And there's some big time flooding issues here, and I think a segment of that money should go towards that one time expenditure. I know we have the, we have FroED, Bristol County Consultant, I'm sorry for the name, that is, you know, having the grants for businesses and, and things like that. Whether that is gonna amount to helping a business, $1,500 or $5,000, I mean, it probably will slightly, but maybe some of that money would have been more wisely spent on your department. So not to money, 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 you know, Monday morning quarterback this, but that's just what I'm thinking. And so I won't, you don't have to comment on that. It's just a general statement. And the other question I had is you purchase the chemicals, which is always very, very important in your budget. How about the issues down at South Wattuppa Pond? Because I haven't got a ton of calls with regard to that, but the beach that was put together by Counselor Pereira and others, and the issues with regard to the water down there, is what's going on in that area?
Yeah, so South Wattuppa Pond is something that, you know, we've had algae issues in that pond for 50, 60, 70-plus years. Something that we're working on. Luckily, last year, I was able to secure funding from Bay Coast Bank to be able to start a Phase 1 study of that. We've joined partners with both Westport and Tivon to try to work to find a solution to that. I have had a couple of public outreach meetings on the, on the studies that we've done. The, you know, the latest one was about a month ago at the, at the UMass building over on the edge of the North Wattuppa Pond. We're using UMass to assist with the stamp, sampling and studying within the pond, as well as a consultant would incur to evaluate the watershed. We are continuing to move forward. Actually, a grant that we submitted, a letter of interest today, was for funding to continue that, to work on projects, and we have another grant that's to. we have another grant that's to, you know, a week and a half through the MVP program that'll assist us with uh with other, with other studying that we need to do over this summer and uh moving forward on some remediation projects within that watershed. So that's something, um you know, if anybody is interested, the PowerPoint from the presentation, I know this is getting off the budget, I'm sorry, but it's on our, it's on a website that we have called the whitupperreserve.com. Um so those PowerPoints are up there and also for government TV did uh record both of those presentations.
So at this point in your two thousand twenty-three budget, there's, is there anything, any increase to be allocated towards that or is it still on hold?
It's not allocated towards uh towards the South Whituppa Pond so far. Uh so far, we've been able to get, again, the private funding from Bo- Bay Coast Bank. Uh we do have uh grant funding. There was a state earmark that uh that was secured by uh Senator Rodrick as well as Reb Schmidt, um fifty thousand dollars that we'll be using this summer to be able to move that, plus the two grants that we're applying for.
Westport involved with that as well?
Uh Westport, we we are in, we uh they are, we signed an intermunicipal agreement last thi- last year uh with Westport and Tivon uh to continue to look at the water quality of South Whituppa and better the water quality within the South Whituppa.
Thank you. I yield, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say something.
Counselor in seat seven?
I I'll say something to that. Both of you gentlemen, Mr. Terry and Mr. Furlan, talked about how we can generate money for the water department. Part of the problem with the South Whituppa is that all of the homes along the water, if they have lawns and they're putting chemicals on their lawns, that those chemicals, when it rains, comes right down in and that some of those fertilizers uh create some of the algae. There's not enough oxygenation in the water, et cetera. However, we own that. We own that pond. We own ten feet from the shoreline because there's no low and high tide, right? Ten feet. Everybody in Westport and Tivon along the water puts in a dock. Fall River, you put in a dock. On this side, you need to go to the building department. You need to pay for a building permit. You're taxed on it, right? Mr. Aya Capone, they pay taxes. But we don't get any money from them. And they're putting docks into our water. They should have to pay us a fee too. Because we own it and we own ten feet over. I don't know what's happening now with the Rod and Gun Club. I heard they sold it and they were doing some digging there, but that was at the last meeting that we had, the re- the meeting they had at the rope company.
Soul Farm.
But now this meeting was very good and it was well-attended, but most of the people were from Westport and Tivon. There were very few people there from Fall River. Um I think it's wonderful. I have a niece that lives on the pond. Her in-laws live on the pond. They all have docks. I think it's a beautiful thing. I don't represent Westport. I represent Fall River and I want my money coming here. If it was in the opposite and Tivon or Westport owned it, you better believe we would be paying to have docks on the Fall River side into something they owned. It's not fair. But that's a way to get money and sell some of your land. Pier Street, sell it. Meridian, sell it. Because that's not even near the watershed, but I can make you money. If you want, I'll sit down with you. I can make you money. The council president, she's into real estate. She can get your money too. Maybe even more than me. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on this before he goes on? Counselor in seat six?
Are we saying it's going to cost forty-five million dollars to take care of their problem?
To take care of the issue within that watershed.
And she's one of the issues?
They're within that watershed.
Forty-five million. Does it make sense to say, well, we're going to straighten it out? It makes more sense to say, listen, we're going to help you out. We're not going to spend forty-five million, but there's something we can do, like, hey, give her the money and let her go. Part of the problem is the city Fall River too, that gave the building permit either to them or the people before them that creates the problem. Nobody on this committee is going to say, spend the forty-five million to take care of that problem. So that's what you got to look at. I certainly wouldn't support it, but it's not fair to them, what kind of problem they got, but they're not really getting anything from you to to satisfy these people. And I don't care. It's going to take what? Even if you had the money, you're not going to do it. It doesn't make any sense. So if you think about it, get together and do what you got to do. That's what you got to do. And on the other issue is uh the meter readers. What's uh, do we read meters? We got a bomb out. Who reads the meters?
So, yeah, we do.
You do? So why do we read all the meters? I don't care if the house is empty or not. You read the meter. You know, if there's no water going through the pipe or, you know, then it's shut off. I mean, to me, it makes a lot of sense. How many people got their houses shut off and they'll go by, well, this one used so much, oh, this one didn't use no water. But, you know, before, prior, you know, they used it, they didn't use it, and now they're using it. So does that make more sense?
You know, I I can tell you if a, an account, one, the way that we read the meters is the billing system sends out all the meters that are active. Uh if we have it in the billing system that a, an account, the meter's turned off, uh it will not call to read that meter. Again, if this is an abandoned house that potentially has, you know, either damage or has been removed, it may not have a radio box. We don't physically go around and read the meters anymore. They're all sent by a radio box back to uh back to the computer system. So if it's a, if it's an inactive account, I I definitely understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me. Read it anyway. How many inactive accounts do you think you have?
Uh I I would have to look at our accounting systems and see. I can't tell you off the top.
Hundred, two hundred? I wanted to take the read the meter.
So to...
Any meter, all the meters. Read them all.
It's all done, they're done daily by, back to our, back to our cloud system.
People that that they shut off, they're not sure if they're using it or don't use it. That's the point. You know, I mean, to me, it's not a problem. That's what you do and you get the answers. That's all. It's only common sense, probably, as I'm concerned. But I didn't go that far in school, so maybe I don't make sense. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Mr. Furlan?
Um, nope, it, I didn't uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're definitely going to have to vote yes now.
Yeah, he checked a lot more about what about sewer.
I think we're going to definitely have to vote yes now at this point.
Item is on for discussion.
Keeping it here on the floor this long, I think we're going to definitely have to vote yes.
We're still in in session. That item is on for discussion. Is there a motion to refer it to the full body?
So moved.
Motion made to refer the water and sewer budget to.
Second.
Full council, by Counsel Kadim, second by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voting? Item four is discussion of the fiscal year twenty-two, quarter three budget. Members of the administration?
We're going to be doing the budgets uh next month.
Did you want to speak?
Okay, all right.
Sorry, I thought you heard me.
Hi, folks. Uh you've all received the quarter three. Uh the, obviously, at this point in time, uh the city seems to be on track for fiscal twenty-two as far as expenditures. Got a couple of problems that we're watching on revenues, you know, that we'll keep an eye on, but the next two months, May and June, are really the critical months where you really start to, you got to pay attention to what's going on. Couple of things in the budget so far through through quarter three are retirements and resignations are somewhat problematic and they've been citywide. And uh and why I'm telling you this is because we we buy out people's vacation time and and sick leave and things like that, that if they've had longevity. So presently, we charge it and we're hoping that through vacancies and other things, there'll be enough money to cover it within the blocks, within those appropriation blocks. I've got a, we've got to watch on it at this point so that we'll keep track of it and make sure that we don't have any real issues, because what we'd like to do is sometime in the month of May, you know, bring the transfers down. You know, you should be bringing transfers ongoing rather than trying to wait till the last minute and then things go, things go wrong. So that's one of the things we'll be keeping an eye on. The other thing is costs are somewhat problematic, you know, gasoline, things like that. Keeping an eye on them again, you know, in the expense budgets, you know, so that we can be in front of it and not be surprised at the end of the fiscal year, you know, that all of a sudden we're, we don't, we don't know how we're going to pay for the gas. Um but the uh, like I said, the retirement thing is, the other thing is, is of course revenue, unfortunately, in municipalities like like Fall River, huge timing issues. You know, we see anomalies in the, in the way the revenue comes in and then you get, you look at it and you go, oh, my God, where the hell is the money? And then all of a sudden, it starts to come back in. And you can't emphasize enough the COVID issues during twenty and twenty-one that you're still not seeing a complete picture, you know, of the things, of building permits and things like that coming back, you know, the, the activity level. Thank God that, for the most part, people have been still spending money in those areas. But the next two months are really critical. Um we will be coming back to the council probably in the next couple of weeks. We'll buy your next meeting with some transfers. We uh we need to take care of the issue uh to uh complete our obligations to the school department, and you heard that during the presentation. We still owe them some money and we're trying, we're trying, we're going to, we're in the process of figuring out which pocket we can get it from without, you know, getting ourselves into a jam. And we will resolve that, so you'll see a transfer on that. We do, we do have some other transfers that will be coming down that are known. Yeah, right, I think right in your, your own department. I haven't seen that yet. Uh the city council, I think we've got a buyout that we need to take a look at in uh in the salaries department, and I can't remember who it was that we bought out.
Allison, remember who that was? Was it who we bought out of, had a buyout earlier in the year?
For the council, for the city council?
Yeah, it must have been for the, yeah.
It was for, the city council was just for Kathy Howard.
Oh, okay, all right. So we, so we'll look at that and make sure that we can either cover that or we'll have to ask for a transfer out of, may probably your expense account and move a few dollars into your salary line item. Um snow and ice, we're, we're keeping a tight look on. Uh we've applied to FEMA. We've been, we know we're going to be getting some reimbursement money, and we also submitted the snow and ice overage for the last twenty-two inch storm that you had here in Fall River. So, yeah, you were in vacation. So, uh, warm, I'm sure. But anyways, uh, so we're keeping a close eye on that because that's always an important factor at the end of the year. You know, uh, some years you've, you've had to raise uh the deficit, other years you've been able to cover it, so we'll keep an eye on that. Other than that, I don't, the other thing is, well, Counsel Reposo, we have looked at the inactive accounts and we will apply that to the capital plan coming up.
You don't know how happy you're right now?
Some transfers I'll need, will need the council's approval to make. And others, because of the amount, will be able to just have the city auditor make the transfers without a problem.
Point, point of clarification, just to respond to that.
Yeah.
So once, once that's done, you'll be able to provide to us an updated list of inactive capital projects.
Yes, I'm hoping that there'll be very little at that point.
I like the sound of that. Thank you.
Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Pereira.
But uh, Ms. Aya Capone, did you look at the uh website, um unclaimed money? And the city of Fall River has a bunch. Some of it is for John Noons. Remember him?
Oh, yeah. I remember recruiting him.
So why is all this money unclaimed? All accidents, insurance companies, that they owe us money? Who's going to check that out?
That's probably part of it, but I'll, yeah, we we will check it out. Is this in the abandoned property part you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll have to check it out. Yeah.
There must be about thirty, forty of them.
Really?
I looked. My name wasn't on anything.
Sometimes what happens is on, it's on outstanding checks and they weren't ever cashed and, but I'll, we'll have to look at that. We can, we'll, we'll access the webpage and take a look at it. I didn't see my name on there, did you?
No, I didn't. I just saw John Noons.
Okay.
Just change your name.
Yeah.
You actually saw his name on there?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it was City of Fall River, John Noons.
Okay, probably his treasurer. They, they probably, you know.
He was treasurer then, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. He was, yeah. So I mean...
Somebody called me and told me. But I, you know, I mean, I like these quarterly budgets. It's nice for us to uh kind of keep an eye on things. But to be honest with you, quarterly, to me, it's a little too much. If we did it every six months, so halfway through the year, give the council an update, because you people get all tied up to put this book together instead of doing other work that needs to be done as well.
On the revenue side, one of the issues is, is the timing of the way the receipts come in.
Right.
For example, in sometime in January, you get your big chunk of motor vehicle excise tax revenue. So when you're looking at certain numbers from, a lot of them, you go, my God, where's the, where's the money? You know, so yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it would be a big help to, to re, I don't know how we would do that. Is this?
It's in the charter.
Is it tied to the charter too?
It is in the charter.
It is tied to the charter.
But the charter's up for review.
Oh, it is. Well, that might be a suggestion.
That might be something, because to me, the amount of work that I hear from all the department heads that they have to submit, you know, every quarter for a budget.
Yeah.
It's like at least six months halfway through the year, we know where we stand. But all the time, I I just, we don't have the manpower in the city to do all the work that we need to do. We need to hire more people.
Good idea.
Some people are burnt out. They're working like crazy.
I know, I know.
And, you know, when you have uh one person doing a lot of things, you're going to have errors. It's just human nature. One person can only do so much, and I see that in several of the departments. People need the support. So that's just, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, one quick comment. We could produce the uh Munis report for city and school expenses uh and and send that down rather than all the updating every capital project, you know, it, you know, instead of doing it quarterly, there's a way of doing that. You could actually get the, get that report, maybe quarterly, and just print it out. Streamline this, that's a good, that's right. Streamline this report.
I like her thought. That's right. She goes streamline. That's what we need to do. Welcome. That'll be, I'll be looking forward to you streamlining as much as you can for us. Thank you very much.
We'll start with the budget.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President?
The, um, so how many retirements did we have that weren't anticipated? Because there's an awful lot in.
I've lost track of them. They're, they're almost across the board. Police, fire, uh, every department has basically been uh, yeah, with, you know, I didn't actually have a, I don't actually have a number in my head, but it's a lot of them.
Yeah, in the police department, how many, how many retirements were there? Were negative two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, you probably, I don't know off the top of my head, but just this past week, I saw two. Two long-term that really weren't completely on the radar screen, because during the budget uh process, you're asking way ahead of time if there are any known retirements coming up and try to maybe do some handling on that.
I mean, we did have at least one person who was um using comp time for a year prior to retirement that we had, we did have a heads up of a year on that one. Um that was within the police department. Um and the solid waste disposal expenses, there's rent and other rentals and leases, and between the two is forty-five thousand uh in the hole on that. That would be um page twenty-one under expenses. The appropriation for rent was thirty thousand, and we're at a hundred and ninety-four percent. So we're in the hole twenty-eight thousand on that one. And other rentals and leases were in the hole seventeen thousand. Why would that be?
Right, offhand, I, offhand, I couldn't give you an answer. Offhand, I, I can check it out easy enough and get you an answer.
Overtime salaries, thirty thousand.
Where's that?
That's uh under solid waste salaries.
Yeah. Oh, overtime, yeah, that's good, man. Wow. Yeah, good, yeah.
So just briefly, and this is, I'm speculating to a certain extent, but there's some context here. With regard to solid waste and with regard to especially the inspectors that are going out and citing people or reviewing the quality of our recycling and how people are dealing with with solid waste, specifically recycling, um if we don't get a handle on that, obviously, our rate goes up significantly if we have um... our rate goes up significantly if we have specifically recycling that has a lot of contamination. And so with the folks that we have, I think that they're being taxed even more than they ordinarily would be in order to try to really undertake a concerted effort to try to get some of that contamination increase down, to try to manage the costs of our solid waste. In addition to that, my sense is that there's been a lot of extra time that's been put into trying to figure out this commercial piece, and so my hope is that we're moving quickly towards a plan there. I can speak to that at a different time because there's much more there. But I just know that there's been a lot, quite a bit going on within that particular segment of DCM, and that would probably account for the overtime piece.
Yeah, and in terms of the inspectors, are we issuing tickets?
So the inspectors cite people for any number of improprieties with regard to how they're putting out their waste, whether or not they're splitting out recycling and whether there's recyclable items in the waste. So yes, there is, there are tickets that are given out, there are hearings that are done in conjunction with the law department, and there's revenue that comes from those.
Are we holding people accountable and actually getting paid?
We are.
Well, that's good, because in the past, we've issued tickets and not received payment for them, so that's a plus.
Baby steps.
Yeah. I don't know what we generally appropriate and what we generally expend in terms of rock, salt, sand, and gravel, but we're at double?
So this is a particularly challenging winter, and obviously, I think everyone here knows that even when the accumulation doesn't necessitate plowing, frequently, the way we're able to keep the streets in reasonable shape is brining and salting and sanding and all that sort of thing. So even though, if you think about the plowable events that we had this year, there were maybe as many more times when we salted and sanded. And then, of course, there was the big January 29 event, there was another February 14 event, and then I believe there was also one in early March, perhaps?
No.
A lot of that, if I may, is, has been submitted for the big, a lot of that cost is from that January event, it's been submitted to FEMA.
Right.
And as you and I recently discussed, and I think I discussed with some other councillors as well, the, even though we submitted for that months ago, shortly after it happened, that was the news item that very recently came across, that the governor had declared that state of emergency, which released those funds. So I believe we put in for, what, $600,000? Is that about?
$585,000.
585, 600,000, which would cover some of those costs.
Yeah, and I believe that's supposed to be a 75% reimbursement.
Yes.
75%. Yeah, I said percent.
So my hope is that that will mitigate some of that, offset some of that.
I only have one thing on revenues. Where the heck did I see it? Let me see, on the marijuana, the 3% recreation, we're only at 54%. I find that low. I don't see any lacking of people purchasing marijuana.
This is where I, this is where I alluded to about the timing. The marijuana, the three facilities that you have in Fall River so far, you, a couple of them, two of them are paying on a monthly basis, one's paying on a quarterly basis. We just got in some payments this past, probably it was either Friday or Monday, and there's some glitches in the timing of the revenue coming in, that's why I was telling you that. Some of this stuff I have an issue with because of the timing, and we've involved corporate counsel to look at one of the contracts and change it, we're hoping to monthly, so that we can get a steadier stream of income coming in on the marijuana as you bring on more facilities. So they're all operating on the same, you know, the same monthly given the revenues. Because those are the ones that scare you. Your budget, what you think is a conservative number, and then all of a sudden, you start to look in May and June, get critical because it's a timing issue. These revenues need to come in on time. The amount's right, it's just a matter of bringing them in at the right timing. And the other thing I need to comment on is overtime. Overtime in Fall River needs controls. This is a budgetary item, I don't care what department it is, they need controls, and that's whether it applies to the Department of Community Maintenance or Police or any of them, they're all alike. They need some type of separate controls on them where there's periodic meetings with the heads of the departments to manage the overtime, because it'll kill you at the end of the year. All of a sudden, you'll find out you owe a ton of money, you know, or the year over. So these are areas that, you know, need control.
Yeah, I agree. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council?
No. Motion to adjourn finance.
Before the motion to adjourn, the clerk has gone and got the resolution that was filed by myself in September of 2021, when the folks from Ten Tiffany Drive first started emailing us. That is in, I had asked if the city administrator, director of financial services, and the administrator of community utilities, be invited to a meeting of committee on public works and transportation. So, Vice President Dion, you are the chair of that committee? If you would put that on your next agenda?
We'll put it on the next agenda.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you would make sure that the folks on Carl, I don't even know, Carlisa, Carlia, and Tiffany, and that whole area are made aware of the meeting. Thank you.
And actually, I would hope to have Anderson Street on there as well because it's a very similar situation.
And there was a motion to adjourn by Council Kilby?
Can I say something before we adjourn?
Yes, absolutely.
On the council agenda, I believe it's items 19 and 20, it says minutes for the committee on finance from March 22 and April 12. Shouldn't that, the minutes, be approved during finance?
Madam Clerk?
No.
I don't know. I got a call from.
Yes, we get messages all the time.
I can speak to that, if you don't mind. So there was a decision that was just recently issued from the Division of Open Government regarding that minutes should be approved within the meeting that the minutes are for.
Correct.
But then, there was additional guidance that came out yesterday, which was really strange, that totally contradicted, at least in my view, I'm not criticizing the Division of Open Government, but it did very clearly say in response to that same inquiry, in fact, the city council can elect to approve minutes for the committee on finance in its main meeting or in the committee of finance, and it doesn't matter. I don't really know why the two contradictory opinions were issued, but Councilor Pereira is absolutely right that there's a recent decision that seems to indicate that the minutes should be accepted within the meeting if they're four, but then that position was seemingly reversed.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Repoza.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted, meeting adjourned, three-minute recess.
You have to stick around here. I'm just going to point you.[1111.16]
City Council meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Yep.
And President LaLavi Lebo.
Here. Would everybody in the chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? And remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the confirmation of Ashley Pyers to the position of city auditor.
Second.
Motion to confirm made by Counsel Pereira?
Yep.
Seconded by Counsel Kilby? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, you still swim in the middle of that once. You're welcome. Congratulations. Congratulate you. That was the best.
Glendale, that's good.
Madam Clerk?
Have the planning board recommending the acceptance of Glendale Street from North Main to a dead end?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Madam Clerk, aware of a motion to adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Would it be appropriate for accepting...
Accepting...
Accept the communication and adopt the order for the plans?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Although, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number three is the police department's annual report.
Motion to accept placed on file.
Second.
Motion accepted, placed on file, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Committee on Economic Development and Tourism, at a meeting held on April 19, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This related to the resolution to provide electrical cabinets to handle electrical needs at the gates of the city.
Motion so made.
Leave to withdraw.
Counselor in seat seven?
The reason that we gave it leave to withdraw was because we've been working on it. All the work has been done at the gates of the city, so it was completed.
Motion to adopt the previous report and leave to withdraw made by Counsel Kilby?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Committee on Public Works in Transportation, at a meeting held on April 19, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying final report be referred to the planning board. This relates to the acceptance of Small Street, extending from President Ave to a dead end.
That's good. Motion so made.
Motion to refer the planning board.
Motion to refer to the planning board made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
The Committee on Public Works in Transportation, at a meeting held on April 19, voted to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted as amended with Counsel Pelletier abstaining and not voting. This relates to an order for the removal of curbing on behalf of Michelle Aruda at 37 Chicago Street. This was for the removal of 26 feet of curbing.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion adopted as amended, made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Any discussion?
Okay.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel Pelletier abstains.
Whereas the fair share amendment is a proposal to amend the Massachusetts Constitution creating an additional tax of 4% on the portion of a person's annual income that exceeds $1 million. And whereas the new revenue, which may exceed $2 billion per year, would be spent on public education and the maintenance and repair of roads, bridges, and public transportation. And whereas this would help working families to ensure that Massachusetts will have high-quality schools, roads, bridges, and public transportation, now therefore be resolved that the Fall River City Council support the fair share amendment that will appear on the Massachusetts state election scheduled for November 8, 2022.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Would anybody like to... Any discussion? Either of the sponsors like to speak? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number eight is the order granting permission to Naomi Soars for the license to operate an auto repair shop at 1030 Dwelly Street.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item nine is the order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric for a new pole location at Essex Street.
Motion so made.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 10 is an order scheduling the hearing for May 10 at 5:55 on behalf of Mallory Rosa for a second-hand... A new second-hand article store.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number 11 is the police chief's report on licenses. On this report, we have second-hand renewals for Echo ATM in St. Vincent de Paul. Both are awaiting approval of EMS and the Fire Department. And for Evita's thrift store has been denied by the collector. So with the council's permission, these will await issuance until we have those approvals.
Motion to adopt, conditioned on the... On no sign-offs. Second.
Did we do number 11?
This is number 11.
Oh, I thought...
It's all of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's the taxi and the second-hand.
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, that would be a motion to adopt...
Pending approval of...
Pending approvals. Made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
And then what are we doing with the one that was rejected? Is that... Was that included for the approval of the collector's treasures?
I would suggest that provided they make... They make payment to the collector, they are denied because they owe taxes.
It would be pending their approval.
Or...
Okay.
They satisfy the collector, then we would issue the license.
Okay.
Item number 12 are applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Item 13 are applications for auto repair shop licenses.
Motion so made.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Reposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to forward to Corporation Council?
Second.
Motion to forward to Corporation Council made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
We have drain layer applications.
Motion to adopt.
Motion approved made by Counsel Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Have minutes of the planning board?
Motion to accept placed on file. Second.
Motion accepted, placed on file, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
We have the application for structures on or over a public way on behalf of the Board of Health.
Motion to approve.
Motion to accept.
Motion approved made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Motion to take items 18 to 22 together.
Second.
Motion to take items 18 to 22 together after a reading made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
We have minutes of the City Council public hearings held on April 12. Committee on Finance held on March 22 and April 12. Joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee held on April 7. And the regular meeting of the City Council held on March 22.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on April 26, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying budgets be referred to the full council for action. This is the FY '23 budgets for water and sewer divisions.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, do you need a roll call?
We need a roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
I would suggest that you do a roll call. Is it the councils wish to take them individually, water and then sewer, or together? You can take them together.
Together.
So we have the Water Enterprise Fund in the amount of $14,289,038. And the Sewer Enterprise Fund in the amount of $26,603,402. And the motion would be to adopt. Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
And President LaLavi Lebo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.